Good evening, South Windsor, and welcome to the South Windsor Regular Town Council Meeting of Monday, March 21st. The time is now 7:01. Could we have a Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag. Roll call, please.
Counselor Evans?
Here.
Counselor Kibowski?
Here.
Counselor Lopez?
Here.
Counselor Paterna?
Here.
Mayor Pendleton?
Present.
Deputy Mayor King?
Here.
Counselor Kozakowski?
Here.
Counselor Lidecker?
Counselor Gamble?
Here.
Thank you. And Mayor's remarks. Happy first day of spring. Today is spring, everyone. It's beautiful weather. Got to wear our bright colors, get out of all those winter dark colors, and get out there and get some fresh air and plant some sunflowers. As you can see this evening, I still have our sunflower and our flowers for the colors for Ukraine. And Counselor Paterna gave us all flags to fly for Ukraine. So please keep them in our hearts and prayers as we go throughout our weeks here and pray for the other countries that have taken in the refugees. And again, if there's any families or friends of folks in Ukraine that are having a difficult time, please contact our Human Services. They'll be more than happy to assist you. And then can we have an adoption of the agenda? Counselor Lopez?
I move to adopt the agenda from the last meeting.
Is there any additions, deletions, corrections? Counselor Evans?
I'd like to add... This is my flag. Motion, I'd like to add resolutions appointing Tierney and Abigail Blanchfield as student representatives to the Strategic Planning Committee as items 13E and 13F respectively, after the other appointments for the same committee. That'll have, we'll have to readjust our letters for the remaining items as well.
Are there any adoptions? Deputy Mayor King?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move items 13A and 13B under New Business after number eight and before number nine, as well as move number 17, our executive session, to after number eight and before number nine.
Thank you. Are there any other changes? Counselor Paterna?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to second the adoption of the agenda based on the changes that were just made.
Thank you. All those, any other discussion, or corrections, or changes, or additions? Not hearing any or seeing any? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, the motion carries. Thank you. Communications and reports from our town manager, please.
Thank you. Unfortunately, last week was a bit busy. I wasn't able to get all of you a written report, but I do have a number of things to report to you verbally tonight. First of all, I'm pleased to announce that we've received an $84,000 grant for a, two additional dispatch locations out of our Emergency Operations Center. That's a federal grant that we'll be working through, so that's great news there. And that'll be a backup dispatch center to our dispatch center at the Police Department. So in the event they didn't, they didn't have power or something of that nature, we would be able to continue dispatching both 911, as well as staff and other resources. Also, I wanted to make all of you aware that we will be holding an emergency management tabletop drill on April 5th. That's going to be including a number of staff. And we've also brought in an outside consultant to help us with putting that together. At this point, I don't know exactly what that drill is going to entail yet. They're kind of keeping it a secret from a lot of the staff, so that way they could kind of test our ability to react to whatever's brought up. So it should be a good experience for us, and we'll have a lot to report back as to the results of that. I also wanted to recognize Reisa Khalid. She was a young lady that brought into the town, asked the town if she could have some donation boxes within the front foyers and lobbies in both the Town Hall and the Community Center. She's put together a beautiful video of all the donations that she received and was able to send off to, I believe, Bangladesh and some other locations, as well as locally here. So that was a great job on her part, and really excited that we could help her in accomplishing that. Also, wanted to update the council. I know all of you are aware that we've received a fairly voluminous-sized FOI request at this point. I've been working on trying to go through the review of the different results from that FOI request. Currently, to date, I'm about 34 and a half hours into it, and I'm a little less than halfway done with it. So we're getting there, but it is taking quite a bit of time. Doing that in between budget and other things has kind of been a little challenging, so... Also, wanted to make sure that the council is aware, we had a meeting with a couple, with a couple representatives of the Patriotic Commission this last week to discuss their banners. I think we've all seen the banners of veterans in the community, especially around the Community Center. Their program has been so successful that they have more banners than they have poles to hang them on around the Community Center, and we're looking at the option of hanging a few of them around the Town Hall and the Town Complex here. So that'll be very nice as we move forward with that. Also, wanted to report to the council that the Main Street Bridge project is currently underway. And at this moment, at this red-hot moment, we are actually ahead of schedule. That could, of course, change based on supply chain issues and other things, but right at this red-hot moment, we are ahead of schedule. Also, the Parks and Recreation Facilities Committee had their first meeting on March 10th. They had a really good conversation related to trying to identify locations and a permanent solution for what we're going to be doing with our Parks and Recreation Department. They have another meeting coming up here, I want to say next week sometime, or the 24th? Yeah, on the 24th. They, they should have received at this point the space needs plan from the Parks and Recreation Department, as well as any of the open spaces that the town currently owns to consider them possibly if there, if there's something that could potentially work for a new Parks and Recreation Facility, or what they want to do. So they're taking a look at all of that. And then lastly, we are in, working on scheduling the Strategic Planning Committee. I know you have a couple more appointments you're going to make here tonight, and we'll hopefully get a date and time for that before the week is up. So that is all I have to report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for our town manager? Counselor Paterna?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Maniscalco, thank you for the report. I know that we're working on a new sign for the dedication for the fairgrounds, John J. Mitchell Fairgrounds. Is that, I know that Counselor Evans has been working on it. Is that date set yet, or ceremony been set?
I was going to hold off and let Counselor Evans announce that for you in a little bit, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. You could, we'll wait for her. I don't want to preempt her.
Any other comments? Questions? No? See, wait till we get to the reports. That's okay. Anything else? No? Okay. Okay, moving on. Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. Yes.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. I apologize for the late button. You mentioned that you're working on FOI requests, and you put in 34 and a half hours into it. Could you describe a little bit what you do in that time?
Yeah, certainly. So there's a number of items that, under the, the Act, are actually exempt from release. And unfortunately, due to the broad nature of the request, it's turning out quite a bit of emails and other electronic documents that are actually exempt from release. So I have to go through each of those emails and read, read them for, for example, personal information related to people's health. W9s and W2s are turning up. There's a lot of property and personal property information that's turning up. Also, it's turning up a lot of state and federal documents that are being released for security purposes that are not able to be released to the public. So as a result, I have to go through and read each of those, determine whether it meets one of the five points within the FOI Act that are exempt from being released. And then if they're, if it's able to be released, I, I have to copy it over into another drive that we will give to the, the requester. If they're not, then we'll leave, then I leave them there as the original document, so...
Okay. And who is doing this review and calling through the...
You're looking at him.
I'm sorry?
It's me.
You? Okay. Is that something that you can delegate to staff?
Probably not. Probably not.
And why is that?
I think out of most of the people here, I've had probably more experience with the FOI Commission and, and the actual Act than most everybody else here. There's a lot of pretty significant, sensitive information that should not be reviewed by other people. And then lastly, the only other person, and I have considered this, would probably be the town attorney to review it, but I think that would probably be cost prohibitive for the town at this point.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Not seeing any? We'll move on to public input. Public input should not exceed 30 minutes. Please approach the lectern and give your name and address, and speakers shall avoid personal attacks or impugning or alleging any improper motive to any person. The speaker may address the council on any item that is on the agenda. The speaker shall limit their speaking time to five minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak in public input this evening on items on the agenda?
Tom Dillon, 34, Armored Hill Road. I'm here to speak about item 7, Public Input 915. Your published rules alluded to constitutional protected speech of American citizens during the public input of nonconstitutors. I have long been disturbed, I can't say long, I'm not sure when it changed, if it ever did, but the rules that you have now are unconstitutional. So I have long been disturbed by this thought, you as a council, thinking that you can restrict free speech of the town residents, and seeing this meeting's agenda, I convinced me I needed I needed to address this with you. This town council does not have the ability to supersede the United States Constitution and the Bill of Rights. The U.S. Constitution was designed to secure the natural rights proclaimed by the Declaration of Independence. The power of the town council does not supersede the U.S. Constitution. You may set forth rules or policy governing the conduct of members of the town council in regards to personal attacks, or impugning, or alleging an improper motive to any person. You cannot censor my remarks or any other resident of the town when addressing this council. You need no look for, to look no further than constitutional case law of New York Times versus Sullivan, 1964. Justice William Brennan authored the court's opinion, and all justices joined in. The court began by explaining the criticism of government and public officials was at the core of American rights to freedom of speech and freedom of the press. The judges wrote in this decision, a 9-0 vote in favor of this, of this decision, and I'm going to research, I'm going to wonder whether there was ever a 9-0 vote of any other nature, that this nation is founded on, quote, from the ruling, "profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues shall be uninhibited, robust, and wide open. It may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials." The ruling was revolutionary because the court, for the first time, rejected virtually any attempt to, quote, "criticism of public officials, even if false," as antithetical to the central meaning of the First Amendment. The citizens of this town don't need to be nice to you if they don't choose to be. You cannot dictate what my comments will be. I'm here to address this policy as I've long thought it was a violation of any resident's constitutional rights. I would caution you against violating someone's constitutional right to address this body as they see fit. It could cost the taxpayer when we are sued. A case in point, a rally was held in August/September timeframe 2021 at Nevers Road Park, across from the police station. The rally was called Back to Blue. A man showed up and was holding a sign that was deemed offensive by the organizers. Long story short, he was arrested because he would not leave. He was arrested for a breach of peace in the second degree. I've seen the video online. He was not breaching the peace. He was very calm and collected. He was charged with breach of peace. All charges were dropped on September 30th of that year. If you don't think that that gentleman, who is a kind of a professional agitator and goes around and does these things, if you don't think there's a lawsuit coming, if there hasn't already been one, you've got another thing coming. That's how he makes money. And those cops violated his constitutional rights. And we, the taxpayer, will end up paying the payout for which he's sure to get. I would hope that, because I brought this up to you, that you would lose any immunity you may think you have if you try to, like, shut me down tonight and don't like my speech. Not the taxpayer, but you would be personally responsible for any damages awarded in a potential lawsuit if you were to violate someone's constitutional rights under the Public Input section of your meetings. I'm going to suggest that you have someone well-versed in the U.S. Constitution and the Bill of Rights, come in and give all town employees and volunteers training on the freedoms inherent in the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. I need to give credit to Simon Campbell for some of this information. I have with me, and I'll give to the clerk if I may, the Bill of Rights, all 22, and a copy, a Wikipedia copy of Sullivan versus New York Times, 1964. The internet is a wonderful thing.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. Is there anyone else I would like to speak to the council this evening?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Good evening. Paul Burnham, 25, Pear Tree Lane, Vice Chairman of the Economic Development Commission. On your agenda tonight, you have a appointment for my, for our commission. I call it my commission because I was chairman, I was chairman until January of this year, so I always say, I always say mine. I, I really am very, I'm very a big fan of economic development in this town. I really like to see, you know, I like to see our town grow, but I also like to see us, you know, work together for the betterment of the town. So tonight you have an appointment on there for an alternate. You know, we really need it because we don't, we, we've been, last year when I was chairman, we struggled with quorums. People don't think, you know, you don't think you do, but you do. You know, vacations, you know, people are just away. Even in virtual meetings, we struggled with quorums. You know, so anytime we can get another body on our commission, it helps. You know, you know, we, we just, because I have learned with some of our meetings that my alternates are the ones that I can rely on more than my actual commissioners, you know, for attendance. You know, and we've had meetings where I've had, I barely got by with seven, six people. So, you know, consider that tonight. You know, you know, we're, our commission, we're, we don't, we're not political. We're 10 people with four alternates that we do the betterment for this town. That's all we are. You know, consider that when you guys are voting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnham. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council this evening on anything
It's on. You're on. Perfect. Sorry for my appearance. I was doing some yard work, but as usual, I start thinking about town council meetings on the agendas while I'm doing the work, and here I am, running out the door to get here. Madam Mayor, councilors, name is Dan Edwards, 131 Hilton Drive. Thank you very much for your time serving on the council. I'm still going back through all the emails and meeting materials and the agendas to take a look at all the names that have been, all the names that have been recommended for the Strategic Planning Commission. But it's proving to be difficult, as revised agendas sometimes omit add addendums, and they may not always show up on the website. I am happy to see Miguel Proano on the agenda for the strategic planning. However, according to my research, it appears that he might actually be one of maybe two people that have actually been appointed by the Republicans, or by Republicans. And that just troubles me a little bit. I see a name, I see Jan Snyder on the agenda, brought up by the Democrats, which is fine. Again, we want to have good people on the commission, however, or committee, excuse me. However, I think we need to be a little cognizant, because as tonight is proving, we've got a few names up on the agenda. Stephanie Weinshob for appointments, Rick Balboni, Tom Del Nicky for various commissions. They've all been shot down summarily, without any much as a consideration, which is really embarrassing for this town. I mean, extremely embarrassing. I think I've said before, you want volunteers. I remember seeing on the Twitter page, I remember seeing all the pleas on various people's Facebook pages, "need volunteers, need volunteers." Well, you can't just handpick the volunteers that solely agree with your opinion. It's not right. I noticed we have a reporter from the J.I. today who, who did an article. Why do you think this is happening? Why are people hesitant to maybe put their names up for consideration when they have to deal with a bunch of malarkey? One of the people up on the agenda, or maybe not the current agenda anymore, but the most recent revised, but she actually serves on the Human Relations Commission. And I think it was the deputy, excuse me, it was the former mayor who brought up that somebody was engaging in disinformation about appointments not be, about a person not being appointed to a commission? Well, I hate to tell you, complete disinformation, because you know what? The people that are against her, they had their say, but you know what? She is still appointed, and she currently leads the Human Relations Commission, which Stephanie also serves on. So what kind of messages are you sending? I see you've already amended, you've already engaged in the same tactic that you have used to forego your due diligence by moving the items for, I think it was Audrey Del Nicky to the blighted property and Rick Balboni. And again, I might be misunderstanding because I didn't take notes in the car too well. I was trying to remember it, but I'm pretty sure you moved them up onto the agenda, or moved them elsewhere, which is a tactic that you used last time. You might as well just say, why don't we're just going to remove them? Just be honest. Don't make them sit through this. If you want volunteers, you know what? Be respectful. You might disagree with their opinions, but that's what we need people for.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Does anyone else like to speak to the council this evening, this evening with anything on the agenda, concerning anything on the agenda? Going once, going twice? Any other speakers, please? Not seeing any? Third time? Anyone like to speak? Help yourself, please.
Toby Lewis, 32, Linda Lane. Hearing from some of my fellow citizens, I'd like to thank you all for serving as you do, and I, serving on several committees as I do, I would like to share with you and with the town public, whoever listens to this, that one-party rule doesn't work very well. Rates will be going up in every committee I'm on. Nothing is going right. I've talked to committee members who got off the phone on their way to the committee toll, and they told me that they just got off the phone with their committee chair, and they were instructed how to vote, even though they didn't agree. And if they didn't agree, that they'd be removed from the committee. I have a gentleman who served as chair of a committee who didn't play ball. He was of opposing. He was not of the same party as myself, but we worked well together, and I respected him a lot. I respected his work. And he was removed. He was not put up for it because he didn't play ball with the town manager. This is not right. And conscience should bother you, because eventually there's a universal rule in life that says you reap what you sow. And eventually, when all the rates go up, when everything's too expensive, you're holding the game ball, and you're saying, well, I guess it's our, it's our responsibility, or it's our fault. And so I'd ask you to consider your ways and to be responsible, elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening concerning any, any items on the agenda? Anyone else like to speak? Any other comments? Not seeing any? We'll move on from public input to item number eight, which is adoption of the minutes of the previous, previous meetings. Counselor Paterna?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Be resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the following town council meetings. Regular meeting minutes of February 22nd, 2022, and a special town council meeting minutes of March 1st, 2022.
Is there a second? Is there any reason we have to do these individually? Was anyone missing from any of these meetings that we have to pull them separately?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I think at the March 1st meeting, we did have a couple of absences, so you may, might want to take them separately.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Paterna. Counselor Paterna?
All right. So I'll, the motion will be to approve the minutes of the town council regular meeting of February 22nd, 2022.
Is there a second? Is there any deletions, corrections, additions to the minutes that anyone may have found? Not hearing any? Any other discussion? Not hearing any? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any, the motion carries. Counselor Paterna, continue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This resolution is to approve the minutes of the special town council meeting of March 1st, 2022.
Is there a second? Is there any corrections, additions, deletions to this minutes? Not seeing any? Yes? Yes, go ahead.
The only one that I would suggest is on the March 1st, the members absent. If we could add Counselor Gamble's first name, as the rest of us are listed by our first and last name, where it says members absent, just says Counselor Gamble.
Let our clerk get to the, she's getting to it. Give everyone a second.
Just out of respect, if we could add Jamie's first name to a member's absent on the town council special meeting, March 1st, 2022. The rest of us are listed by first and last name. If we can just add Jamie's name to Counselor Gamble. Thank you.
Is there any corrections, other corrections or deletions? Thank you, Deputy Mayor King. Not seeing any? Is everyone in agreement in, with that correction? Okay, addition there. Counselor Gamble's first name. Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Roll call, please.
Counselor Evans, abstain, right? Counselor Lidecker?
Yes.
Counselor Gamble?
Abstain.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Kozakowski?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor King?
Yes.
Counselor Kibowski?
Yes.
Counselor Paterna?
Yes.
Mayor Pendleton?
Yes.
All right. Two abstentions, and one, two, three, four, eight, yes. All right. Two abstentions and one, two, three, four, eight, yes. Seven, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 13A.
Good evening. Just one second. We'd like to set up a PowerPoint if we have just one second.
Absolutely. Item 13A is our Affordable Housing Plan presentation by Mr. Glenn Schaudler. I hope I said that correctly. Schaudler, consultant for the Plan and Metrics presentation. It's also with Michelle Leip, our Director of Planning, to be present.
So while it's coming up, just briefly, again, I'm Michelle Leip, the Director of Planning, and with me is Glenn Schaudler. We have been working with the town's Affordable Housing Group, I think since last summer, I think July timeframe. And I just want to thank that group. I know a couple of folks are here tonight. Bart Pesekonis and Stephanie are here, and I know Andy Paterna served on it. This is a group came out a couple times over the fall and helped contribute and are responsible for the plan that's in front of you tonight. Just briefly for the public, this is a draft affordable housing plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission will be taking it to public hearing on April 26. It is available out on our website under the Planning and Zoning link. I'd encourage folks to take a look at it, and we would be certainly encouraging comments at the April 26 meeting. Tonight Glenn's going to give an overview to the town council, and we're happy to be here to answer any questions you might have on it. Thank you. Turn it over to Glenn.
Thank you. My name is Glenn Schaudler. I'm a consultant with a firm called Plan and Metrics. We've had the opportunity to work with South Windsor before, the most recent plan of conservation and development, and zoning regulations for the town center area. And I'm happy to have had a chance to work with and for the town in terms of preparing an affordable housing plan. I've put together a PowerPoint to give an overview of the key issues related to this document. In 2017, the legislature passed a public act which required that all municipalities in the state of Connecticut, all 169 municipalities in the state of Connecticut, prepare affordable housing plans. The requirement in the statute that no plan, no such plan should be older than five years. So guess what? Five years after 2017, there's about 169 municipalities in Connecticut working towards this deadline. As Michelle indicated, a plan needs to be adopted by June 1. The statutory obligation is to, the plan shall specify how the municipality intends to increase the number of affordable housing developments in the municipality. To prepare the plan, an affordable housing plan working group was put together. A plan, a draft plan has been endorsed and forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration. And the commission has scheduled a public hearing on adoption for April 26. The plan itself contains five major components or sections to it, the first of which is a discussion of planning for housing choices, a section on relevant background information, an overall vision statement for South Windsor, an overview of housing strategies, and then discussion about plan implementation. Many people are surprised with the discussion about the need for affordable housing. And this chart here starts to explain the reason and rationale. What this shows is the relationship between median household income and median housing price since the 60s. And so if we look back at the 1960s, what we see is that housing generally cost about three times somebody's income, and given interest rates, et cetera, that was readily affordable for people. And I guess a more blissful time compared to what I'm about to tell you. And what happened over time is that housing prices have escalated well beyond three times people's income. In the 2006 subprime mortgage crisis, it was up to four and a half, almost five times people's incomes. It has dropped back, but since that time, housing prices, again, relative to income, have increased significantly. And this data from the Federal Reserve doesn't pick up what we are now referring to as the COVID bump, which is another 25% in terms of housing prices. So housing affordability for people who have housing today, they think they're very fortunate and lucky because the house that they're in has escalated in price and value. For people who don't have housing today, and these could be elderly residents in South Windsor, children of current residence are looking at the price of housing and wondering how they're going to be able to afford it. So this is the challenge that Connecticut faces, and not just Connecticut, other municipalities in Connecticut and other states in the nation. And so this is the challenge, if you will, that we face. Through part of our research, what we discovered is that there may be about 4,000 housing units in South Windsor today, which are considered naturally occurring affordable housing. What we mean by that is that these houses sell at prices which would make them affordable to people earning 80% of median income. The challenge in a sense is they're not deed restricted. This data may not reflect what current sales prices are, and there's still a profound need for affordable housing in South Windsor and in other communities. What we also found through our data research is about 2,300 households in South Windsor that are housing cost burdened. What we mean by that is that these are people who are spending more than 30% of their income on housing. And if a household is making above-average incomes and chooses to spend more than 30%, well, good for them because they could perhaps afford to do so. The challenge we have is that there are many households that 80% of area median income or below, who are forced to spend more than 30% of their income on housing. That means there's less money available for transportation, for education, for healthcare, for recreation, some of the other things that people take for granted. So housing is a basic fundamental human need, and a need again in South Windsor and other communities. Now, South Windsor is fortunate. We have 739 units in South Windsor, which meet the state definition of affordable housing. And that generally means that they are restricted to sell or rent at affordable prices. And because of what South Windsor has accomplished, the town is in the middle of a four-year moratorium, which is going to expire in 2024. So we are not subject to 830G, the Affordable Housing Appeals process, but come 2024, perhaps we could be. As part of our work effort, we undertook a community survey. We got significant responses in the community. Some of the key findings or lessons that came from the survey effort is that the word affordable housing is a little scary to people as to what that is, that the design of housing is critically important, its location, that accessory dwelling units could help, because I think those are housing units which are associated with existing housing units in town, and people aren't afraid of a new project or redevelopment which would occur. And people felt that housing near the town center could help strengthen the community overall. We took all this information and put it together into the draft plan. The goal, which was selected by the working group, seek to provide for a variety of housing options and choices in South Windsor for people and households of all ages, incomes, lifestyles, and life stages. And so it's more than just affordable housing. It's also about housing options and choices. People are living longer today than they lived in the past. Life expectancies are longer, I guess is the way I should state it. And as people's age and circumstances change, sometimes they seek different housing options. South Windsor is a wonderful community. They'd love to stay here. But if there aren't housing options and choices for them, they may not have that opportunity. So the plan recognizes that and addresses that as well. Now, I've summarized the strategies here in the plan to give you just a broad overview of the plan, but also highlighted some things that may come back to the council at some time in the future. So the first strategy is about enhancing the capacity for addressing affordable housing. And two strategies that may come back to the council in the future is the concept of establishing an ongoing working group. This would be an advocacy entity within the town to investigate, research, propose, promote the concepts of affordable housing, work with staff, with CROG, at ways to try to continue this effort. The second recommendation in here is the concept of establishing a special housing fund, also known as a housing trust fund. This is a separate municipal account that grants, loans, gifts, bequests, donations, fees, all sorts of methods. Funds could go into this account to allow South Windsor to promote housing and affordable housing. Some of the strategies that are perhaps more directed to the Planning and Zoning Commission are increasing assisted housing. Assisted housing is housing created with state or federal funding, which subsidizes the construction costs so that it can be rented at affordable prices. This is, for example, housing owned or managed by the housing authority and other nonprofit developers in South Windsor. The plan suggests increasing deed-restricted affordable housing. This might be an apartment building, multifamily housing might get built, and a certain number of units would be set aside as affordable housing for a certain period of time to help address that situation. As I mentioned earlier, strategies related to the location and the design of affordable housing are recommended, and the plan is being important as well. So what did I do last time, Michelle? The screen froze on me. What did I? There we are. No, you just have to get up, and it seems to fix itself. Other strategies in the plan, land is often the hardest thing that happens or is needed to create housing and affordable housing. And the plan recommends that the town seek land which could support affordable housing. As part of the plan, we recognized land that the housing authority owns and operates, Wapping Mews and Flax Hill, may actually have some additional land area on those parcels, which could support housing, additional housing production. But are there other parcels of town land or even excess state land which the town might have a right of first refusal on that could be in appropriate places to consider for affordable housing? Because once the land's available or reserved, maybe we're not halfway there, but we're certainly making significant progress on this particular issue. And then strategy 4.7 is about increasing other housing options and choices. This doesn't get us affordable housing units necessarily. It doesn't get us what are known as housing unit equivalent points, which is how South Windsor got its current moratorium. But it is housing to address community needs. And the phrase that's used these days, one of the phrases is what's called middle housing. And middle housing falls between single-family homes on individual lots at one end of the spectrum, and at the other end of the spectrum are larger multifamily developments. And so in between those two types of housing can be two-family housing, what are known as cottage courts, bungalow courts, courtyard apartments, three or four family units, and other types of housing. And there can be ways in communities to use and include those housing types to provide housing options and choices for people, and also ways that make the community stronger. So our conceptual schedule is tonight, again, to give the council an overview of the plan. We are going to post the plan on the website, the town website. And there's a 35 day statutory period, and that brings us to the public hearing on April 26. Gives us the opportunity to have the hearing, make any tweaks or changes or anything else that might be desirable, and meet the statutory deadline. So that's where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. So if there's any questions or discussion, I'm happy to help any way I can.
Thank you for that presentation. I love our PowerPoint. That's really, it's really good, but it's going to take a little bit to read through all of this. But it's very informative. There's tons of information in here that what you've given us. So is there anyone on the council that has any questions for our presenter this evening? Counselor Kabowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Could you explain, I saw the term up there, and I've seen it in here a couple of times, deed-restricted housing? What do you mean by deed-restricted housing?
Thank you. That's a great question. Deed-restricted housing is a scenario where the deed for a particular property contains a restriction that limits its rental rate or sale price to state-defined levels. And this is levels affordable to persons and families at 80% of area median income or below. So for South Windsor, 80% of AMI for a family of four is about $80,000 a year. I think the numbers are in this report. Yes, on page two, for those of you who have the report, is the area median income, the income threshold at 80% and 60% of area median income, and then rental rates and sale prices that would be considered affordable housing. So deed-restricted would mean that for 40 years, the sale price or rental rate is restricted to affordable prices. And they change annually based on recalculations or re-reporting median incomes. Thank you.
Counselor Paterna? So with that, I'm going to follow through with that. I do, we do have some of that deed-restricted, or we did have some of that deed-restricted housing in South Windsor in certain planned urban developments within our community. And then those houses somehow stopped being deed-restricted, and then they could be sold for the...
You're remembering back a long time ago when we had a different program, and we did some deed restrictions in some of our design residence developments. That program was not giving us credit at the state level, so those are no longer deed-restricted. However, since that time, there's three developments, the Clark Estates Development, Clark Estates 2, and also the Schoolhouse Road Development, that have created deed-restricted units. There's a total of 11 of them, so those are deed-restricted for sale. And when they go, come up for sale, they go through the formula to make sure they stay as an affordable unit. So those are different from the ones from years ago.
Okay, so I can forget all that stuff from the olden days?
You have a long memory.
I do. I have very, well, to be quite honest, no, but to be quite honest, I was one of those single parents that came to this town hall saying, I can't afford to live here. And one night I came up here in my slippers, and Mr. Edwards talks about coming up, and he's doing yard work, and he's got to get up here. I was very upset because there was no place for me to live in town. And that's what started the affordable housing way back in the olden days. Yes.
So then the other deed restrictions are related to the apartment complexes that have restrictions, deed restrictions, based on their financing or those kinds of things?
Okay. So how does, I'm sorry, go ahead, Counselor Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question regarding the survey conducted in the fall of 2021. Was 936 the number of responses that you were expecting, or was this underperforming?
I wanted 1,000, so it wasn't quite what I thought, but 900 is an excellent number. We were quite pleased with the response.
Has the result of that survey been looked at by census block?
No, the information that we requested in the survey did not tie to any particular address or census block. We did use, I think it was four neighborhoods?
Yeah, we did try to locate them in neighborhoods. Yeah.
So they were within South Windsor?
Yeah, you were given an opportunity to indicate what neighborhood you were in so that we could kind of see that we were getting representatives from different neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you.
And if you're, for people either on the council or at home who are interested, there were reports prepared as part of our work, and there is a summary report of the survey itself. And so it has some additional detail on these survey responses.
Will that also be on our town website?
I can certainly put it out there.
That would be great. The survey responses, summary report there of that. Counselor Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the report. Very informative, educational. Got a lot out of it, and especially the reading material. I have a question. I'm not quite sure I understand the Affordable Housing Appeals procedure. So we were given a moratorium two years ago because we had hit the 10% threshold, more or less, and now we've done well. So now we have a hiatus of meeting that? Like, I don't understand.
I'm happy to help. I think, I feel like you're opening a little bit of a Pandora's box, that there's a lot of ways that this could go. In 1989, the state of Connecticut adopted a law which was known as the Affordable Housing Appeals Procedure. Many people know it by its statutory reference, which is Connecticut General Statute 8-30G. What the statute says is that if the...
I was just going to turn it off. It was blinding them.
Oh, well, thank you. Very, very...
I'm sorry. I was just being blinded by the light. Go ahead.
What the statute says, that less than 10% of a community's housing stock is characterized or meets the criteria for affordability. And South Windsor was at...
6.7.
Thank you. You're a wonderful researcher. So we are subject to the Affordable Housing Appeals Procedure. And what that means is that the developer can submit an application that does not have to comply with local zoning. And then the commission's challenge is how to review that application. And really, the only reasons for denial could be substantive threats to public health or safety. There's two ways for a community to become exempt from that procedure, one of which is if we were to get our percentage from 6.7 to 10. The other way is that every affordable housing unit created earns what are called housing unit equivalent points. And South Windsor received a four-year moratorium because enough units had been created to meet that requirement. And so we're already on our way to additional units towards the next moratorium, but I don't know that we're going to get that in effect by 2024.
All right, thank you. That helps a lot. Thanks.
Counselor Lydecker?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for this presentation. I just kind of want to follow up on Counselor Gamble and the answer that you just gave. Is it the amount of units, or is it occupied units? And I guess I'm trying to get to the reality of COVID. There was eviction moratoriums, and then once that kind of reopened, landlords were able to essentially remove their tenants. So now the properties are vacant, even though they're... So now the properties are vacant, even though they're slated for affordable housing, but the landlords are not re-renting because they're almost afraid to. So is it actual rented units that count, or is it just the unit itself and that availability?
That's a fairly complicated topic in the sense that it is the units that count. Those are the, the state has a master database, and the units, as Michelle indicated, for these developments get added on, and they can track to the actual date that the deed restrictions are in place, or for the assisted housing, as long as those restrictions are in place. There can be situations with private developers who are renting units under what's called the tenant, the state's Tenant Rental Assistance Program, otherwise historically known as Section Eight or Housing Choice Vouchers. There have been some shenanigans going on as a result of the eviction moratorium. Unfortunately, there appears to have been some bad behavior on the part of landlords and tenants, so that when the eviction moratorium came off, units became unoccupied. That challenge is that South Windsor gets credit for a tenant rental assistance unit, even though it's completely taken care of by the private sector in the state. So people need the housing, and if landlord chooses not to rent it to somebody receiving rental assistance, the town really can't do anything about it, but a unit gets lost and a family or household that needs the unit no longer has access to it. So it's a complicated scenario, complicated by COVID. It's unfortunate, but it's also part of the challenge of trying to create affordable housing, is that we can do our best work in terms of trying to create units and opportunities for people, and things like pandemics happen and people behave perhaps not the best way possible in their long-term best interest, and they're more challenged. So it's going to make this hard over time. Hopefully, we're through with the worst of this.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Kazakowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you to the two of you for preparing this housing plan. I know it wasn't easy, and I know it's necessary, mandated by the state, but I think overall it's a pretty good plan to, or it's a pretty good policy document to get us towards achieving our mandated affordable housing needs. I didn't want to belabor the eight dash thirty G issues. I've, I have plenty of commentary on that, which I may or may not have at the public hearing at P&amp;Z, but I, you know, I haven't figured that out yet. I just want to say if eight dash thirty G applications, just so the council knows, I don't know if South Windsor has experienced the ugly side of a eight dash thirty G application. I have twice. And if you think the Talbot Lane project terrorized South Windsor, you haven't seen anything yet. That aside, you do have some good strategies to add to the affordable housing list or qualified units. I did want to say that there was one I thought was missing, that I thought could be important, was promoting CHFA mortgages. That those are units that would qualify what those are, you know, if a new home buyer wants to purchase a house and there's a federal program, or maybe it's a state program that offers assistance to first-time home buyers, and those mortgages would count towards the affordable housing stock. And I think that's a great strategy because it would not increase the housing stock in any way, but it would increase the affordable housing list. So was there any reason that was not discussed, or did I miss it?
There's a lot of stuff in here.
It was mentioned.
First reaction was that you had missed it because of course it would be in here, but I can't put my finger on it right now.
Okay, so there is a reference to it, and that counts how many, but just maybe there's a strategy to find a way to, you know, incentivize or promote that mortgage option.
Thank you.
Did have one more question, I believe. I wrote "yes," exclamation point on a lot of these pages. Oh, yes, okay. In one of your strategies, let's see, four point one, strategy, oh, sorry, page seventeen, strategy seven, establish protocols for rental rates and resale prices. What does that mean?
The math on an eight thirty G, verifying the rental rate and the sale price, there's really three things that need to happen to occupy a unit so that it counts for us. First of all, is the household has to be income qualified. If they earn more than the threshold, they can't get in. The second part is that the sale price has to meet the criteria based on the calculations of income and housing cost burden and all the other stuff. And then the last requirement is the forty-year limitation on that particular unit. The challenge can be going through the math to verify that all those boxes get checked. And if it doesn't happen, there have been municipalities in the state where shenanigans have gone on again, and units are sold above the eligible price, which means you can't put the genie back in the bottle, that unit gets lost. So the issue here really is standard procedures and protocols for documentation so that the administration of these is fairly straightforward and that the sale prices and everything else. And some of the challenges that can happen can be issues related to capital improvements. Somebody wants to fix up their unit. And the issue is if it's a market rate unit, people who occupy a market rate unit would put the investment in the property and presumably it would increase the sale price. It's a prudent economic investment. Affordable housing is a little bit more challenging than that because if you put in the capital improvement, it can increase the price above the affordability rate. So there need to be sort of protocols in place to say, listen, if you want to put in a stereo system, knock yourself out, but that's not going to get capitalized into the purchase price. So that's probably not a good idea. On the other hand, if it's a boiler or HVAC system or something like that, yeah, that's integral to the livability of the unit. So these types of things need to be thought through so that we can try to maintain the affordability of these units over time.
So would those be specific to deed restricted units? Or, okay.
Because it's not really an issue, particularly on ownership units. So for rental units, they're fairly simple to administer. Is the occupant or the applicant income qualified, yes or no? Is the sale price, excuse me, sale price, I said that, rental rate, is the rental rate comply with the statute? Yes, good to go, complete the transaction, everybody's happy. And our goal here is to get annual reporting on these. When it's a for-sale unit, it changes the dynamics a little bit. And just people need to understand, affordable housing is an opportunity to get housing that you can afford, but it doesn't open a Pandora's Box of ways to, you know, dramatically increase its value because we, it's got a restriction. You can't sell it perhaps for what you put into it. So there needs to be education, there needs to be protocols, policies that say, okay, if you're going to make a capital improvement in the property, maybe you should just kind of talk to us a little bit, and we can walk you through whether or not that's a prudent thing to do. So I think our long-term goal is to make these units affordable for the forty-year term, or we've talked about even longer perhaps, and then move in that direction. So I think all municipalities in Connecticut are becoming more familiar with this issue and topic. And this is an issue statewide that people are looking at. Why are they only affordable for forty years? Why can't they be affordable longer? And how do we keep them affordable longer?
Okay, thank you. And I just want to just say I do like the idea of forming a special committee, another committee, but this would be an important committee to look at these issues. Because it's, it's easy, it's easy to say you can do something, but it's hard to dump on, dump on somebody to have this new responsibility of something like, you know, evaluating income for qualified, evaluating, you know, prices. So I think forming this committee, that's outlined in the strategy one is great, and I think, I think it's an important thing for South Windsor to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Kowalski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Going back to the other question on deed restrictions, so would this be for home ownership? Would this be on new developments going forward? It would be, so it wouldn't be, there wouldn't be existing homes now where we would go the onus and you are now in a deed restricted area.
I think the plans suggest that it might be possible to, through tax incentives or even purchase, to purchase a deed restriction, but I don't think we're about to go around with the wand and say, well, you're deed restricted, but your neighbor's not. We're not, we're not talking about that. As part of new development, the zoning regulations could be modified to require affordable set-asides as part of developments, or encourage or incentivize it to happen. But as for existing housing units, it's, I would say, almost impossible retroactively to go back and make this happen. But perhaps we could find ways for units in town which are already naturally affordable, you're just missing the deed restriction, that if we could purchase a deed restriction, we get, we get Housing Unit Equivalent Points, we get closer to our goal, and we don't have to necessarily big, build new construction or new developments. We could perhaps find ways to do that.
Thank you.
Councilor Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a quick question for availability of protected affordable housing. Seven hundred and thirty-nine housing units which are price-protected, what does price-protected mean? It means no frozen price, or it means small increases?
The rental rate is restricted relative to how HUD reports the income. So there's four categories or four flavors of housing that would account to our Affordable Housing Appeals List, one of which is what's called assisted housing. This is the Housing Authority. And then there's also some private metro...
Very, very bad.
Yep.
So those receive state and federal funds. The requirement was that they be rented at affordable prices, so those count.
But the price keeps going up?
It can go up.
Yeah.
Because incomes rise, hopefully continue to rise in the future, then the math is eighty percent of area median income or below is an eligible family. They can't spend more than thirty percent of their income.
Okay.
So that's how the rental rate gets configured.
Right. So these four hundred and forty-three units that are assisted housing, I think I met about two hundred of those individuals. And they all were saying that they were not affordable anymore, that prices had gone up. And my question is, do these complexes fall off the list at one point when it's deemed not affordable anymore by the individuals that live there? Or does it fit the definition by the state and it remains in here as affordable forever?
As long as the financing's in place...
Yeah, those are all still under the affordable at the state level. So I think they're reacting to their, their rates are going up. I've heard that as well, but I believe the units that are affordable units are still restricted to the allowance.
Okay.
I think the challenge can be that if interest, excuse me, if incomes were to jump ten percent, but if somebody was on social security income and their social security income went up four percent, then it becomes, in their experience, a significant increase which they feel they can't afford. And unfortunately, the rules, the way they're set up by the state and federal government, you go through the math. So it really depends, I think, on the specific financing documents and other things.
Yeah, which is another topic that can probably be looked at by a commission. Thanks, thank you.
Great questions, you guys. Any other questions? So you said "we," and "we," and look at "we" standing there. I don't know if you're the "we." And Michelle, what is it that you need from the council? What would you like to do from here, please?
What we wanted to do is make the presentation to you, answer any questions you have. Again, the planning and zoning will be entertaining it at April 26th. If the council wanted to endorse the plan or provide any comments via resolution, we would certainly welcome that at the 26th meeting. You don't have to do anything, but we're glad to be here to present it to you and, you know, you had a lot of great questions, and I'm glad to see some enthusiasm on it because it's an important issue.
And now would zoning, would you have to create new zoning regulations to put any or to get any of these put in place, or...
Yeah, the first step is getting the plan in place, and then from there, through the different strategies, it would be up to the planning and zoning, whether it was new regulations, or if we, the town council wanted to go forward with a committee, you know, then we'd start looking at some of the strategies we have moving forward. As you all know, or if you don't know, we did put a housing, the planning and zoning put a housing moratorium in place for one year. One of the goals of that moratorium was to look at more affordable housing opportunities. So I would suspect we'd be looking at some regulations once this gets adopted along the lines of some of the strategies.
Okay. And I suspect that it would take more than one department to govern any type of plan that would be in place, such as the finances or the payability of the folks to, maybe Human Services could help with you?
Yeah, I think that was one of the goals of having a housing committee, was that we could get the different disciplines maybe on the committee, to have someone from the finance end of, maybe someone from the real estate end of it, those kinds of things. You know, my biggest concern moving forward after having done the work on the moratorium for the affordable moratorium, you know, we're a young town in the affordability part of it, you know, forty years seems like it's forever, but you know, we've got some projects that are twenty-five years deed restricted already. So in another fifteen years, we got to be thinking about those coming off and new ones coming on. So it is something that really is, needs to be tracked and looked at and revisited, you know, fairly frequently. So I think a committee would be a good role, that'd be a good role for the committee.
And would you come back to the council to form this committee? Would you take charge of forming this committee? Would you take recommendations from the council? How would you like to form this committee?
I would probably defer to Councilor Kazakowski on how he thinks it would be best. I would think it would be best as a council committee.
Council committee?
Yeah.
Okay. And you can come in with some recommendations as to what folks within our town staff that you'd like to see on this committee?
Sure, be glad to do that.
Okay. So we'll have you back after April 26th to discuss...
Yeah, once we adopt it, we'll make it a point to come back and revisit with you.
We'll see you in May.
Okay. Or June, but yeah.
Or June, May or June, all right. Thank you, Michelle, I appreciate it. And thank you, sir, for coming in. This was wonderful information. Thank you. Okay, that's thirteen A. Moving on to thirteen B. It's the fiscal year 2023 general government budget presentation for Mr. Maniscalco, please. Thirteen B.
Another one, I got to get out of the way here, I'm going to get blinded again. All right. Thank you, everybody, for coming and watching my proposed budget for the fiscal year 2022, 2023. Really, from my perspective for the town council, this kind of kicks off our budget process and our budget activities for the upcoming year. So this will be the beginning of a lot of work for all of you. That said, it's not the beginning for the staff, and we've been hard at work over the last couple months putting together the budget and getting things together. First of all, I'd like to start with the town council budget policy statement. This year, the town council passed the budget policy statement in record time, which very much was appreciated by myself and others. We kind of broke that policy statement out into these eleven different points. We don't need to read through them to save everybody some time. And I know all of you have actually approved that budget policy statement, so you're aware of it. But that budget policy statement is your direction to myself as to what you're looking for in the upcoming year's budget, and we try to make sure that we hit all those things. As you can see from your policy statement, I then provide guidelines to the staff as they put together their budget, and that gets turned in to me. So that's, that's the direction that I gave to the staff. So this year's proposed budget by major, this is the proposed budget by major function, the total budget is one hundred and thirty-four million, one hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars, which is a four point eight-two percent increase. As you can see, breaking out those different major functions, the general government budget is an increase of one point nine six percent. Town debt is a point seven percent decrease. Capital is an increase of sixteen point nine two percent, which is in keeping with the ordinance that we have in place. The Board of Education is a four point nine five percent increase. And then lastly, debt associated with education, so basically the schools, is a twenty... with education, so basically the schools, is a twenty-six-point-five percent increase. So here's the process that the budget has gone through to date for, before we gave it to you. So as you can see, each of those are the major functions, kind of the four big buckets that we have of the budget, and you can see what the requests were in that top row. The next is where I made my adjustments and what it ended up being at the, at the bottom. So for example, for town operations, when that budget came to me, I, and now that I'm presenting it to you, I've actually already cut seven hundred and nineteen thousand, two-hundred dollars out of that budget. I think, as you can see with debt, of course, those are our obligations that we need to pay. We can't, we, we want to make sure that we keep our financial obligations, so we didn't cut anything there. I did reduce the capital budget by a half a million dollars. And then, as you can see, I don't have the ability to touch education, so education gets passed on to you how it is. The total number of cuts that I've made to the budget this year is one-point-two million dollars. So this is by major category for the, the budget. Just overall, looking a little bit further, getting a little bit granular, more granular into it, you can see how the, the, that's all made up. So we're looking at both, education is the piece of the pie there, as well as general government, public safety, public works, culture and leisure, human services. It should be pointed out unclassified. That includes our pension payroll obligations, insurance, or payroll tax obligations, and then insure, insurance, also our debt service, and then capital improvements. It's always helpful to kind of look back in history. Being a former history major, I always like to take that ten-year look back and try to see where we were and where we are today. So kind of looking back at what that pie looked like for the approved budget from twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen to today for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three proposed, you can see the education budget at that time was sixty-six percent of the pie. It's now gone to sixty-one percent. Town debt went from three percent to four percent. The town operations has actually stayed the same at twenty-eight percent of that pie. Capital and transfers went from one percent to two percent, and then education went from two percent to five percent, associated with education debt, I'm sorry. And I think it's important, we just wanted to break out just, we always consider how you spend your, how we spend your tax dollars. It's one of the, probably the most important things to every one of our residents, as well as all of you, and we just wanted to break that out and show you just visually how that dollar is broken out and spent. So where is that total allocation of the additional funds that are being requested going to, and where's it coming from? The total overall additional funds that are being requested is six million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Of those funds, three-point-eight million dollars is being requested by education. One-point-two is being requested by debt associated with education, so that's the schools again. Town operations is seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Capital is three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And then, as you can see, the town debt actually decreased this year due to retiring different projects that have been, or different debt issuances that have been done. So we've actually decreased that by about forty-two thousand dollars. Again, in keeping with the budget policy statement, there are no increases in employees. You can see we've kept that flat for the last three years. And we're gonna, again, in the proposed budget, it's flat again. Town operations budget increases excluding debt and transfers. So this is just the general government budget overall. On a ten-year average, as you can see on the far right, we have a three-point-two percent increase on average over the last ten years. This year, our request is actually one-point-nine-six. So we're underneath our average in our proposed request. And how do we break out that, that one-point-nine percent increase? Basically, it gets broken out, as you can see here above. And I think this tells a great story in terms of inflation and the economy right now, in terms of the challenges that we're facing. We're seeing a lot of our contracts increasing, so we're seeing a large increase in, in all the contracts and maintenance contracts for the town of two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars out of that seven hundred that, that we're requesting. Additionally, we wanted to recognize inflation and the cost of doing business in our community, so we've also put in there an increase for our grant-funded agencies. So that includes agencies like the fire department, the Wood Memorial Library, our local library here. That's what's made up in that eighty-eight thousand dollars. So we thought that was important to keep that in there. Trying to pick up on any of the other big-picture ones, I think everything else is pretty much self-explanatory for the most part. Trends in town expenditures. This was an interesting slide we wanted to provide for you because it's, while we're at twenty-eight percent, we've kind of kept that twenty-eight percent piece of the pie, our increase, our expenditures have actually increased over time. But yeah, we're still staying in that same percentage of the pie. So the town, general government hasn't actually increased in terms of the overall picture. Now, we're gonna talk about the capital budget and funding associated with the capital budget. I know at your last meeting, we had a presentation regarding roads, and during that presentation, there was a talk about a reduction of about two million dollars from capital and specifically associated with roads and how that's connected directly to the condition of our roads. And you can actually see where that decrease occurred within this chart and how we've been fighting tooth and nail over time to try to get that, that money back up there. Because our capital assets are some of our most important assets and some of our largest assets, and maintaining those is extremely important for us moving through to the future. You can see in 2020, we had a great year in terms of being able to finance a number of projects, which increased the actual overall expenditure of our capital budget. And what we're trying to do is catch up to where we were able to do that, those financing activities. We're trying to catch up in terms of our actual funding and cash. So as you can see now, for 2023, we're proposing budget to be two-point-two million dollars. And that two-point-two million is in keeping with the, the ordinance that is in place that says we have to increase our capital budget every year associated with our grant list growth. So just to kind of look at what's in the capital budget and capital projects, this is a very general breakout of it, and it probably changed just a little bit as of the last capital meeting that they just had the other day. Basically, our culture and leisure, that's our parks and recreation projects for around two-hundred thousand dollars. General government projects, that's actually associated with our revaluation. A, a good portion of that's revaluation, which we're gonna start undertaking for this upcoming year. Public safety projects, you can see four hundred and forty-five thousand. And then public works, that includes a lot of the maintenance on our buildings and our roads and other assets. And you can see we have a couple of other funding sources that are coming in there as well from Locep, Locep and C and R, those are state funds that are coming in to help support some of those activities. Now, these are debt payments, I'm talking about debt, and trying to look at, you know, how much is getting allocated where. As a normal debt schedule, and I think those of you who work with debt schedules may understand, they typically go down over time as new projects come on or we are issuing additional debt associated with our, like our school construction project, that, that'll just get layered on top of this, and it'll actually change the way that looks. But as of this year and going out into these outer years, these are the actual numbers of what we would need to pay for debt that's been issued by the town. As you can see, it's broken out by the three different portions in terms of education, general purpose, and sewer debt. So we've talked about the expenditure side of the budget. Now, we're talking about the flip side of it, which is revenues, and that's how we're gonna pay for everything. So we have a total proposed budget of one hundred and thirty-four million dollars, so we need to figure out how we're gonna come up with the revenues to pay for all of that. This kind of shows you where we expect those revenues to come from. As you can see, our intergovernmental, those are state grants and funds that come from the state, local revenues, those are, you know, different fees associated with building department or the fire marshal's department, things of that nature. And then you can see the majority, a large portion of it comes from property taxes. Here's basically how we see our revenues, how we're gonna make our revenues change by that six million dollars that we need for the expenditures, because we need to provide a balanced budget to the, for the town. So we're expecting our grant list growth to be about three-point-three million dollars. That's that two-point-nine percent grant, grant list growth that was released a couple of weeks back. Also, from current taxes, we're gonna be, with the change in the mill rate, we're expecting to get about two-point-three million dollars. Prior year, those are our tax sale, as well as additional efforts made by our collections department to try to collect back taxes. We're expecting that's gonna be about five hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Again, permits and fees. I think if anybody has a bank account that's interest-bearing, you understand the interest rates have been pretty low and not actually providing you with anything. So again, we're, we're actually decreasing that in our, in our projection. And then the same with our transfers. We're gonna actually talk about that a little further in another slide. One of the, second to property taxes, one of the largest forms of revenue that we receive is our education cost-sharing grant. This is something that's kind of been on the table at the state level for multiple years now, and we've been, that's been up for debate and conversation. The state has been trying to basically lean municipalities back from actually depending on these funds. As you can see, it is a sizable dollar amount. Current, this current year that we're in, we're anticipating about ten-point-nine million dollars to help us offset our educational costs. That needs to be tempered with the idea that about five to six hundred thousand dollars of that actually goes to our magnet school that we have located within our community. So that doesn't mean that we get all of that money to the town. Some of it needs to go to that magnet school. This year, as we've seen in multiple years, there's been a lot of conversation about, you know, should we be reducing ECS to municipalities at the state level? And as a result, we've conservatively estimated that to bring it down a little bit lower again. So over time, we're, we're expecting to try to keep stepping that down little by little by little. This is an interesting chart associated with that ECS conversation because you can actually see how the ECS grant has been stepped down over a ten-year period, and you can see how property taxes have basically made up the difference. So this is our grant list. Overall, to talk about the grant list growth, which grew by two-point-nine-one percent, you could see ten percent of that is made up by, is made up by personal property, eleven percent by motor vehicles, and then seventy-nine percent by real estate. In real dollars, what that means, about eleven-point-seven million dollars is made up by the motor vehicle taxes, thirteen-point-three million by personal property, and then ninety-two-point-seven million dollars in real estate. And you can actually see how our grant list has grown over time. You know, we, we did have that spike back in thirteen, fourteen. That was a revaluation year in there. So that made, made for a little bit of an anomaly, and we're probably gonna be seeing a similar scenario possibly as we move into revaluation again this, this coming year. So this is our mill rate and our mill rate history. And interestingly, when we look at the mill rate history compared to grant list growth, quickly you would think, okay, well, grant list growth is great, so our mill rate should actually go down. What we're actually seeing is somewhat of a little bit of an opposite scenario in this, in this year's budget, and we've seen in a couple of others. You could see in 2021 and 2022, that certainly did play out, that the grant list grew significantly, and as a result, the mill rate went down. In other years, we, we are not seeing that in a couple of those other years, especially when there's larger budget requests. So I think it's important to talk about the motor vehicle mill rate cap. This is something that's been on the agenda recently at the state level. It's something that we actually talked about with the governor this last week when he came to visit. If they do cap our motor vehicle taxes, mill rate at twenty-nine mills, so they would basically be bringing it from thirty-eight-point-seven-one down to twenty-nine, that would be a loss in revenue for the town of about two-point-nine to three million dollars. There is funding associated in the current governor's budget to make up that difference in a grant to the municipality. That grant, from what we've seen, may leave us whole, it may not, in all honesty. The numbers are a little wishy-washy, and we're not a hundred percent sure where that's gonna leave the, the community. So let's just say, and historically, this has happened, where the state has passed a mill rate cap, but not actually shown up with the grant afterwards, we could potentially be facing a revenue hole as a result. And as I said on Friday, that would actually result in a tax increase, which I don't think people really want to have. So this is always a, a great slide, too, to kind of figure out how we get to our mill rate, and where are the drivers that are getting us there. So the proposed mill rate is gonna be thirty-eight-point-seven-one, which is a two-point-two-five percent increase. And you can see how the, this all worked out. So you can see education was an increase of three-point-three-nine. You can see the town was an increase of point-six-five. You can see capital was point-two-nine, and debt service was one-point-one. But then, on the flip side of that, you have the grant list, which is bringing those numbers down. You have non-taxable revenue changes, which is bringing that number down. That got us to where we were at the thirty-eight-point-seven-one. And then this is our tax increase history over time. So you could see, 2014, I believe, was a revale year, which is why it was such a large spike. But you can see where we are and where we've been. So 2020, you had a one-point-nine-six percent increase. We've then decreased, 2021, 2022, we had a small decrease. Now we're at a two-point-two-five percent, with your ten-year average at two-point-six percent. This is the one slide I said we were gonna talk about later, which is use of surplus funds. One of the big-picture things that Standard and Poor asks us about pretty regularly is the use of any surplus funds or one-time revenue sources to help fund our regular operating budget. As you can see, historically, that was something the town actually did in 2018 and 2019. Moving forward, we've made a commitment to not do that. That's looked at very favorably by rating agencies, and that was actually identified in your budget policy statement to not use fund balance to balance the budget. And you can also see that we've kept our obligation at putting, continuing to put money into our tax stabilization fund in the event that we need to use it. Thankfully, we have not had to at this point, and I think we probably would like to try to stay away from that as much as possible. So oftentimes, we get asked, how do we calculate the mill rate? This is a great example of how it all comes together. So we have our total proposed expenditures of one hundred and thirty-four million, one hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars, less our total non-taxable revenues, which is eighteen million, thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars, which equals the property taxes that we need to collect, which comes out to a hundred and sixteen million, ninety thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. We know that the value of a mill is two-point-nine million dollars, which divided that. So we're dividing that one hundred and sixteen by the two-point-nine. We come out with thirty-eight-point-seven mills. Just again, to kind of reiterate how your dollar is spent, what this looks like, and kind of how your, your value on your home is calculated. First of all, how every dollar is spent, four cents goes to general government, one cent goes to health and human services, six cents go to the police department, six cents goes to the unclassified section, again, that's insurance and other items. Fire department gets two cents, debt is nine cents, public works is seven cents, capital is two cents, culture and recreation, two cents, and then education is sixty-one cents. If you wanted to, if anybody's curious into how to fill, figure out their, their, what their taxes are gonna be, you could take the value of your home, times seventy percent, which is the assessed value, that gets you the taxable value. So for a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home, that gets you a hundred and seventy-five-thousand-dollar taxable value. Then that one hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar times the mill rate, which is point-three-eight-seven-one, and that equals the amount of taxes you, you would have to pay. So in this instance, it would be six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. Now, I'm gonna turn it over for a brief presentation to you by our Assistant Finance Director, Jessica Malone. She's been working on a transparency dashboard for all of you, as well as for the public. This will be your opportunity to dig around, for the public to get their calculators out, make you have a good time cutting the town manager out of the budget and see how that changes, see where things go. So go ahead and you can show them what you've been able to put together.
So this is currently on the website, so anybody at home can go onto the
So, this is currently on the website, so anybody at home can go onto the town's website, and it is available. So, here, you can click the link. It's a digital budget book. It's the same software we used last year for the transparency page, but now a budget book view. This is the same as the councilors received and may receive today in their budget book that was printed out. We can print this to PDF, anybody at home. Anything that you look at here, you can see what's available. There will be more to come when the council approves the final budget that you would see in the typical budget book last year. Something I wanted to point out is the department summary pages. They all are classified by the major functions. You can either use the carrot dropdown to find the department you're looking for, or that the overview page, you can see and click to the page you're looking for. So, it's very interactive. There was new items added that weren't in last year's book, as well as interactive charts, and I know I'm scrolling fast here, but trying to get down to one. So, as you hover over these charts, you'll see what was budgeted and what was actually spent in the years in each department's page. And then, typically, this pie chart will show how that department's budget is broken out by the different categories, and then a breakout comparison over the years. And I did scroll right over it, but this chart does compare the current budget, this is the current budget for the department's request, and it compares it to last year's council approved. So, that's the difference in the dollar and the percent here. We also included the special revenue funds, as well as summaries of the revenues and expenditures, where you can also find the town manager's detail of how each department was broken down. I know that was fast, but if there's any questions right now, I'm having you do it, but I think it's a pretty simple website to, to scroll around and find what you're looking for.
Show us where that online calculator is for the folks that call in and would like to be in there.
Sure. The online calculator is actually back at the town's website, not in the, this particular budget book. And it's still, until the council approves, we still have it as the current mill rate, but we-
Current budget we're in.
Current budget we're in. I'm happy to go back there to show it though. This tax calculation form. And here, you can calculate with, with the current mil. And I will turn it back over to the town manager.
All right. Just so everybody's aware, we do have, as I said in the beginning, this is the beginning of a much longer process over the next couple of months. So, we wanted to make sure that everybody had all the dates and times for all the public meetings that are going to be out there for the council, as well as for the public to attend, watch, they could potentially participate, make comments at some of the public hearings, et cetera. We wanted to make sure that was available for everybody. And then, lastly, if anybody has any questions as they review the budget book, as they review the budget, as they've seen this presentation, please really don't hesitate to ask. Please call, always happy to answer whatever those questions are. And additionally, for the council, as we move through our workshops, as the different departments come up, if you have questions as you're looking through it, if you could send them to us ahead of time in writing, we certainly would, it's a lot easier to answer them ahead and get, be prepared to answer them rather than on the spot. Because then, if it's on the spot during the meeting, there may be, we're going to have to look into that, we're going to do some research, we're going to get something for you. So, that is all we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. Does anyone have any questions for our town manager on the budget that was presented to us, or comments, or anything? Not seeing any? I'd like to say thank you. That's, that was, what I like to see is what you showed us, that you can go to each department, more items were added, you can see the breakdown of the various depart, I love that. Much more detail. And each department, did that, Mr. Maniscalco? That is phenomenal. Thank the staff, please, for that, because I love the transparency, whatever program you guys figured out, it's great. But I love the transparency where you can see everything, and it explains it very well. And I like, you know, your PowerPoint of what you've given us, and now we just have to jump in and start looking at the budget. And that's that, and thank you, everyone. All set? Questions? No? All right. Everyone all set? Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. Okay. Now, moving on, where are we? We are now on 17A, move 17. Deputy Mayor King, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I ask that we move into executive session to discuss the South Windsor Non-Supervisor Professional Employee Union contract. I invite the town manager, Michael Maniscalco, the assistant town manager, Ms. Perry, and assistant town manager, Mr. Roberts, as well as any other appropriate personnel that you guys deem necessary.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any, the motion carries. We will be back as soon as we're done.
Yeah, all right. Thanks. Ready?
Yeah.
Okay, like to call the meeting back into order here. Item number nine, communications from liaisons, officers and boards directly responsible to council. Councilor Evans.
Thank you. I have quite a few to report, so if anyone else has any and wants me to take a break in the middle, by all means, jump in. So the Human Relations Commission, the Standing in Solidarity with Ukraine event was held on Wednesday, March 16th at the town hall. Myself, the mayor, councillor Kobowski, councillor Paterna, we all attended. I believe there was probably about forty or fifty participants, including Ukrainian individuals from our town, and meaningful speeches, a lot of community support. HRC had sunflower seeds for those in attendance. That's the Ukrainian flower. And it was a great event for our community to come together, and I really do commend HRC for putting it together so quickly and effectively. Also, I'll just repeat again that HRC is hosting a photo contest and exhibition. The title of it is Resilience and Hope Rising. They're accepting submissions through Friday, June 24th. It's open to amateur and professional photographer residents of South Windsor. Exhibition entries will be displayed at the South Windsor Public Library for the month of August, and you can find more information and a link on their site and Facebook page. Next. Additionally, the Park and Rec Commission. They discussed the cross-town trail, continuing to work on those with Eversource and abutting property owners. The work at Ryce Street Park tennis courts, repurposing for pickleball and deck hockey. At this point, it's really just a matter of waiting for the ground to thaw. The programs for Park and Rec really are booming. Preschool for three- to five-year-olds is at 100%. Two-year-old programs had nine openings remaining, and fourth hours averaging 200 participants this month. The lottery for that for next year will be held this spring. Athletic programs, adult leagues have all been really popular. Also, Park and Rec is reopening open gym, which has been of huge request. So they're going to be offering it starting April 4th. Teen gym will be Wednesdays, 2:00 to 3:30. Adult, Fridays, 6:00 to 9:00, and Saturdays, 10:30 to 1:30. Family open gym, Saturday, 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. Also, they're hiring, so for any teens, college students, camp, they're hiring for camps, lifeguards, snack shack, ticket, the entry booth at BMP, and also going to do their own lifeguard training in-house. I'm sure we've all received the awesome booklet from Park and Rec at this point. I'm going to continue to be amazed with how much is offered. Resident registration is April 6th. Additionally, Parks was happy to announce they are fully staffed, and they are working on a project to make park signs around town more uniform. All will be made and housed by our talented crew, so just keep an eye out for those fresh signs around town. Anyone else? If I can keep going. Okay. South Windsor Alliance for Families, we met today. There's an upcoming event, Spring Into Healthy Living. It's next week, March 29th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the community center. It's going to include simple ways to relieve stress and spring into a healthier life. Some opportunities include meeting therapy dogs, participating in arts and crafts, decorate planters, learn about healthy snacks. There will also be dinner, games and sound therapy. Great event for families in town. Currently, registration is low, and they won't be able to hold it if more families have not registered by Friday. There's a small nominal fee for attending, and you can register by going to their page, Youth and Family, Teen Center. Also wondering if we could put it on the town's social media and the website, the link to sign up for that.
Yeah, if you could just send me whatever you're looking at.
All right. Additionally, today, so often when SWAF meets, the discussion centers around the services and the needs related to mental health. So we all know and continue to hear the same thing throughout the community and even around the state. And I think we as a town and a council really need to look at what we can do better to understand what we currently have available, as well as how we can better provide mental health services to our residents. So it's a discussion we had today, and I really think if we as a town council can come up with a way to look at mental health for our town, that it would really benefit our residents. So hopefully something we can discuss at a future date. Anyone else? The last two I have are the Art Commission and the Social Justice and Racial Equity Commission. So just to give a status, the Art Commission has five remaining spaces available. Democrats have filled the three seats currently spoken for. And although we do have one more to nominate and appoint, I really do call on the Republican Town Committee to fill their duties in finding appropriate individuals for the four seats they're responsible for filling. For the Social Justice and Racial Equity Commission, there are four seats available. Democrats have filled three, Republicans have filled one. Same ask that the Republican Town Committee fulfill their duties in finding and appointing individuals for the last three seats. These two commissions were created with the intent to be non-political. And I'm disappointed, as we approach the Social Justice and Racial Equity Commission's creation, that we are almost a year out and this commission has not been able to meet. Additionally, with the Art Commission, we are months into this and have not been able to have this commission meet. So I really do hope that we can find individuals who can participate in these commissions. That's all I have for this.
Thank you, Councilor Evans. Does anyone have any other reports? Councilor Kozakowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to report that on March 15th, the Planning, Zoning Commission held a meeting. They had, they decided on several applications, but the ones I want to note today is that they approved a moratorium on resident, a residential moratorium on single-family subdivision and special exception permits for housing. They also denied a application for a warehouse distribution center on Talbot Lane. And with that denial, I do want to point that the commission did find that the interveners, the public that was speaking against, met the burden of proof that the application likely, will likely cause harm to the environment. I also want to report that the commission also approved a site plan for a new People's Bank building at Evergreen Walk. Thank you.
Any other reports from councillors? Not seeing any. Moving on to item number 10, reports from committees. Councilor Evans.
Thank you. So as you asked, councillor Paterna, from the naming committee, on behalf of the naming committee, the John J. Mitchell Fairgrounds sign installation has been completed. And on March 29th at 1:00 p.m., we are going to be hosting a ceremony to reveal and honor the fairgrounds and the sign. The family has been invited. I also extend the invitation to the town council and the communities. That's March 29th at 1:00 p.m. at the John J. Mitchell Fairgrounds. Additionally.
Any other reports from committees? Go ahead.
So the town manager shared most of this information already. I just did want to touch on the Park and Recreation Facilities Planning and Implementation Committee, which I really think we need to come up with a good abbreviation or nickname for that, because that's a mouthful. But I just wanted to note that we did set our schedule that we will be meeting at 5:30 on the second Thursday of every month in the Madden Room. And the committee is aware that those meetings probably will not be enough to get the work done and anticipate having some extra meetings, some special meetings in there as well. I have one more.
Thank you. Any other reports from committees? Go ahead.
My final one, Strategic Planning Committee. So this is the last time I'll report on this one. It'll be the deputy mayor and councillor Kozakowski in the future. The, I'm thrilled to see the final names to complete this committee on our agenda. Previously nominated names will be great additions. Tonight, I just want to express how great it is that we have young people, students, interested and invested in being part of this committee. Also, the inclusion of Jan Snyder provides a wealth of knowledge, experience, a breadth of expertise with her previous experience working on strategic planning, that I think will be invaluable. This range of individuals on this committee, I think will make a great group, and I look forward to seeing the work that they do.
Thank you. Any other comments on committees from councillors? Not seeing any. Moving on to item 11, Consent Agenda. Councillor Gamble.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion to approve agenda items 11AA through 11AB as a first reading on the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Discussion? Councillor Paterna.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to request that items 11AA and 11AB be remitted to the consent agenda and added to the new business agenda.
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Low call, please.
Councillor Evans?
Yes.
Councillor Lidecker?
Yes.
Councillor Gamble?
No.
Councillor Lopez?
Yes.
Councillor Kozakowski?
No.
Deputy Mayor King?
Yes.
Councillor Kobowski?
No.
Councillor Paterna?
Yes.
Four yeses and one, two, three, four noes.
What?
Is that wrong? Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Pendleton.
Oh, thank you. Yes.
Yes. Okay, that's five yeses and four noes.
Could we get the noes names, please?
We have councillor Evans. You are a yes? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Sorry about that. So that's six yeses and three noes.
Thank you. Okay, and moving on to councillor Evans.
Motion to approve agenda items 11BA through 11BC as a second reading on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any of the motion carriers. Just give me one second. And item 11C is miscellaneous. There isn't any. Item 12 is councillor Lidecker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution approving the South Windsor Non-Supervisor Professional Employees Union contract for the period of July 1, 2020 through June 30th, 2023, postponed from 3/7/22. Now therefore be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the proposed agreement between the town of South Windsor and the South Windsor Non-Supervisor Professional Employees Union for the period of July 1, 2020 through June 30th, 2023.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any of the motion carriers. Items 13A and B we've done. Item 13C, councillor Evans.
Do, do we move those things that got moved off the consent agenda to the first order of business on new business, right?
I would.
I think that's how it works.
First or at the end?
I thought it was at the fir, I thought it was first order of business.
If you'd like to do first order, I certainly can do that for you, yes.
All right.
I didn't think it mattered, but okay. Sure.
Okay.
Sure, no problem. So we'll go back here to items 11AA first, and that would be councillor Gamble.
Thank you. Resolution appointing Audrey Dell-Nicky to the Blighted Property Appeals Board and postponing consideration of this motion until the town council's next regularly scheduled meeting. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Audrey Dell-Nicky to the Blighted Property Appeals Board for a term ending November 30th, 2024, to fill the unexpired term of Jamie Gamble and postpones consideration of this motion until the town's, town council's next regularly scheduled meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Go ahead, councillor Gamble.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to challenge the other councillors today to approve these two appointments. And if not, please be transparent as to why you will be voting no. I think these, these two candidates deserve that, at least some transparency and understanding from the other councillors, so, thank you.
Councillor Kozakowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to express my support for Audrey Dell-Nicky for this position, this volunteer position on the Blighted Properties Appeals for this position, this volunteer position on the Blighted Properties Appeals Board. I know through my personal or my professional work experience that blatant enforcement is really not for the faint of heart. And I can imagine that a, sitting on a board such as this requires the same kind of dedication and kind of toughness that I think Audrey brings and can do a good job on this board. I just want to, also want to say if, again, if this removing from the consent agenda is signaling that more positions are going to be blocked, I think we have to kind of relook at this process of first reads and second reads. Because essentially what it's turning into is it takes two votes to approve somebody to volunteer their time to provide service to the Town of South Windsor within their spare time, within their current commitments. Again, volunteer, spare time, takes two votes to approve, one to deny. And I frankly think that is backwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kozakowski. Councilor Kabowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support Audrey's appointment to the Blighted Property Appeals Board. I know firsthand, when I had questions regarding the Meztec property, I did talk to Audrey. She helped me with understanding some of the issues from the past. But I also understood that she's got a fairly decent knowledge of how the process works. So I fully support Audrey for this position.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other comments? Councilor Paterna.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to address Councilor Gamble's concern. I just would say that I think there have been many efforts to reach out to these individuals to express our concerns and I think it's up to them to address those concerns at this point. Thank you.
Any other comments? Not hearing any. All those in favor? Any opposed? No. Roll call, please.
Councilor Evans?
No.
Councilor Lydecker?
No.
Councilor Gamble?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Nope.
Councilor Kozakowski?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor King?
No.
Councilor Kabowski?
Yes.
Councilor Paterna?
No.
And Mayor Pendleton?
No.
All right, that is three yeses and six noes.
Thank you. Moving on, Councilor Gamble. 11AB, please.
Thank you.
It could be 13AB. But go ahead.
Resolution appointing Richard Balboni as an alternate to the Economic Development Commission and postponing consideration of this motion until the Town Council's next regularly scheduled meeting. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Richard Balboni to the Economic Development for a term ending November 30, 2024, to fill the unexpired term of Robert Burns and postpones consideration of this motion until the Town Council's next regularly scheduled meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Councilor Paterna? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilor Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just say, in this case, I believe that conversations have been had. I believe that he has tried to make amends. I believe enough time has elapsed, whatever that appropriate time is, apparently. I'm not quite sure, but you know, conversations have been had. I think conversations have been going well. And so I would implore you to extend an olive branch and approve this one.
Councilor Kozakowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to support Rick Balboni for this position. I think this would be a really good fit for him. He works for a, does finance for a good firm. I know that he has personal ventures, small businesses that he supports and takes care of. And I think that he could provide a, be a valuable asset to South Windsor on this commission, bringing his knowledge and experience. And I do want to kind of appeal to Mr. Burnham's plea. I understand how frustrating it can be with having vacancies and create quorum problems. And just a reminder that business cannot be conducted unless there's a quorum. And it can be extremely frustrating for commissioners, for staff, for everybody involved to put in the time and effort to set agendas, to prepare for meetings, to go to meetings only to sit there and not have a quorum and be, go home frustrated. So any opportunity that we have to fill seats with volunteers, I believe we should oblige for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Kabowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I normally don't like to speak and repeat things that have already been said, but I'm going to echo a lot of what Councilor Kozakowski said. This is somebody who is a, I think, a perfect fit for economic development. He's a small business owner here in town. He also has a, he works, has a financial background where I believe he is a controller of a company. And I honestly can't think of a better person to fill this position. And I don't know right now if there's anybody on the EDC that does have a financial background, but I know coming from that world, it's been helpful in areas that I've served. But, and as Councilor Kozakowski said, just hopefully you will all take into consideration what Mr. Burnham said here tonight about their issues with obtaining a quorum. And I think we've got somebody here who's a good fit, so hopefully we can get him in. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kabowski. Any other comments? Councilor Paterna.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you again, Councilor Gamble, for your input. I appreciate it. I think there are still some concerns and I'm happy to hear that you've had conversations with Mr. Balboni and I'd be happy to have some of those conversations with you after this meeting so I can understand what's happening. So thank you for that.
Any other, Councilor Evans?
Thank you. I just wanted to reflect on something that was said earlier and then it was just repeated again about if we have someone who wants to volunteer, we should be putting them in that position. And I just, I just think that we can't, just because a person says they want to volunteer, we have a duty to the town to make sure that these are the appropriate people to fill those positions. I don't think we should just be opening the door to anyone. We as councilors need to hold those who we appoint to boards and commissions to a high standard, just as we do ourselves. So I hope that as we're considering those that we bring forward, that we're considering who they are, how they represent themselves, and how they will represent the town on these boards and commissions.
Thank you, Councilor Evans. Any other comments? Councilor Gamble?
Just, just one last comment. I just, you know, I think one moment in time does not define who a person is. I think it's a culmination of a lot of the, you know, experience that they bring. And we, and sometimes people make mistakes. Yes, they own up to it, they take accountability for those mistakes. But, you know, one moment of weakness or somebody getting under their skin or whatever it is should not bar them from serving this town in a volunteer capacity. And I hope that we can come together on this. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Gamble. Any other comments? Thank you, excuse me. All those in favor? Any opposed? Roll call, please.
No.
Nope.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
No. Thank you, the motion doesn't carry. And moving on now, we are on 13C. Resolution, Councilor Evans.
Resolution appointing Janice Snyder to the Strategic Planning Committee. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Janice Snyder to the Strategic Planning Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Council Paterna.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Councilor Evans, for bringing this nomination forward. I applaud Jan Snyder and her years of experience and welcome her to this role. She's had, I think probably eight years ago when we did the last strategic plan for the town, she was very much involved. So I want to just extend my thanks to Jan for stepping up and joining us. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor? Any opposed? Not hearing any of the motion carries. Item 13D, Council Kozakowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution appointing Miguel Proano to the Strategic Planning Committee. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Miguel Proano to the Strategic Planning Committee.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Not seeing any, not hearing any. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any of the motion carries. 13E now is the resolution appointing for the children to be on the strategic planning, which Councilor Evans brought forward earlier this evening. So Council Kozakowski, you will have the old 13I, which is now the 13E.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution appointing Abigail Blanchfield to the Strategic Planning Committee. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Abigail Blanchfield to the Strategic Planning Committee.
Is there any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any of the motion carries. Deputy Mayor King, 13F.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution appointing Tiernan Cabot to the Strategic Planning Committee. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Tiernan Cabot to the Strategic Planning Committee.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any of the motion carries. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can we just correct the spelling of his first name?
Sure.
T.I.E.R.
T.I.E.R.N.A.N. for Tiernan. Kathy? Tiernan's name is T.I.E.R.N.A.N. If we could correct that now, that way it's corrected in the minutes. Thank you. Now moving on to the old 13E, I do believe that's where we're at. And 13E, Council Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. 13E, resolution setting a time-
The new G. 13G.
13G. The resolution setting a time and place for a public hearing to receive citizen input on the proposed general government budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby sets Monday, April 18, 2022 at 8:00 PM in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall, 1540 Sullivan Avenue, South Windsor, Connecticut, as the time and place for a public hearing to receive citizen input on the proposed general government budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any of the motion carries. 13H, Council Paterna.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the resolution setting a time and place for a public hearing to receive citizen input on the transfer of funds from closed capital improvement project account to the Women's Police Department locker room account. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby sets Monday, April 4, 2022 at 8:00 PM in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall, 1540 Sullivan Avenue, South Windsor, as the time and place for a public hearing to receive citizen input on the transfer of funds from closed capital improvement project account to the Women's Police Department locker room account.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Not hearing any, not seeing any. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any of the motion carries. 13I, this Deputy Mayor King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution approving the fiscal year 2023 budget calendar. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the fiscal year 2023 budget calendar, a copy which is attached as Exhibit A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any of the motion carries. Council Gamble, 13J.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution approving a refund of taxes to 16 South Windsor taxpayers. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves a refund of property taxes to 16 South Windsor taxpayers, the total of said refunds being $6,780.66 and as more fully described on attached Exhibit B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Council Gamble?
Nope, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any of the motion carries. And item 14, I believe that we're on right now. And that is passive ordinance, we have none. And item 15 is public input on any matter. Is there any, anyone from the public that would like to speak to the council on any matter? Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey Dell-Nicki, Felt Road. Here we go again. This is Groundhog Day for my fellow Republican, Rick Balboni and myself. Instead of waking up listening to Sunny and Cher, I've Got You Babe, we're waking up to no, 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 and nope. Once again, you are denying qualified people vetted by the minority party to serve on boards and commissions. At this time, I will speak about myself. Effective January 1, 1999, I was appointed to serve on the Inland Wetlands Conservation Commission as a full member and was reappointed several times by both Democrat and Republican-controlled councils. My qualifications were never questioned. I served on this commission even after being elected to the Board of Education in 2017. I resigned from the commission effective May 21, 2018 to serve on the Town Council to fill the unexpired term of Councilor Merrick. I served 19 years, four months, 10 days on the Inland Wetlands Commission as a full-time member. At the February 7 Town Council meeting, I was on the council agenda, being nominated for an alternate position on the Inland Wetlands Commission. I repeat, 19 years, four months, 10 days as a full member of that commission and I was denied an alternate position. Tonight, my name was on the agenda, nominated for the Blighted Policy Property Appeals Board alternate position and was denied by the majority party. On February 6, the mayor posted on her Facebook page openings on boards, commissions, and committees. A graphic asking, "Do you or someone you know want to be involved in South Windsor?" Another seeking individuals to serve on the Park Rec Facility Implementation Committee. Another seeking two senior residents. Two members of the South Windsor Board of Schools to serve on the Strategic Planning Committee. Another seeking non-elected South Windsor community members to serve on the Social Justice and Racial Equity Commission and another seeking South Windsor residents to serve on the Arts Commission. You claim to be seeking residents to serve on boards and commissions, but qualifications don't count. Why would anyone, anyone want to submit their name when they see how you treat qualified individuals that have volunteered, have experienced, and served in the past? So please rethink before you adjourn tonight's meeting and reconsider this vote. If you do not, you will show how political you are being and how you are blocking experienced members of the minority party. Whatever happened to the town motto, "One town, one future"? I'm saddened to say qualifications are supposed to count, but don't count with this council. And, Councilor Paterna, no one reached out to me to find out what the issues were. So you, sir, are spreading misinformation. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening on item 15, public input for any matter?
Corinne Bordwa, Pleasant Valley Road. It was mentioned earlier tonight that a large FOIA request was the reason that our town manager was unable to fulfill his other duties such as sending out a report to you councilors. I'm quite aware of this large FOIA request and I'm also aware that this request was originally not completed to satisfaction. In fact, there was proof that many items that were legally required to be included were not. I also find it interesting that the town manager is so intent on fulfilling FOIA nuances now when he had no problem denying a resident access to a public meeting, which is a giant FOIA no-no. Now, for anyone who may think that this is quite an inconvenience, you're right. Now, for anyone who may think that this is quite an inconvenience, you're right. And I'm here to remind you of the reason behind this inconvenience. It was the abuse of authority that the town manager used to place an unnecessary mask mandate over town businesses. While you may be experiencing the inconveniences now, remember that those were not just inconveniences for the business owners when under those policies, but they, those business owners also experienced financial losses because of those policies. Policies have real consequences. In a previous meeting, the town manager blamed Cox Cable since their systems were too old, and then blamed the calling system not working for that technology being too new. Then it was blamed that the update for the archiver was the reason why the FOIA request wasn't fulfilled correctly the first time, and now it is being blamed that since the FOIA request has to be fulfilled as legally required, that that is the reason for this, once again, inability to complete duties. In a previous meeting, the town manager was quoted saying, "There is no need to question other people's abilities to do their job or whether they're doing their job appropriately." And I'm here to remind the town council that that is incredibly untrue. Let me also remind you that the town manager's salary is 391% higher than the average salary in the town of South Windsor. He has two assistants, which previous town managers did not have. We don't need to feel bad or accept excuses for poor job performance. Councilors, you are here out of volunteering, out of the goodness of your heart. You are doing your roles without getting paid, while he is making over $189,000 annually. He works for you. He works for us, and South Windsor deserves better than bad policies and sorry excuses. Also, I'd like to mention how earlier there was a call to Republicans to fill commission seats. This is happening while simultaneously, repeatedly denying multiple Republicans for multiple commissions. My question is, is why would Republicans want to put in their names for these commissions that you're trying to fill, knowing that they could easily be voted down along party lines? Once again, actions have real consequences, and it's interesting that it only seems to be an issue once certain people are inconvenienced. In a recent quote published in a Journal Inquirer article, Deputy Mayor King said, while referring to the suitability of these Republican appointments, "You have to have a cool head when you're in these elected and appointed positions." I'm curious why this only seems to apply to some, because I was here for the town council meeting when Counselor Paterna stormed out of the town council chambers because he didn't like what was being said during public input. And I'm here to ask that you stop holding these appointments that you're voting against to standards that you yourselves have failed to live up to. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening under item 15?
Dan Edwards again. 131 Hilton Drive, single dad. Like to be able to do some housework, but apparently it's not possible. Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor King, blink if you can hear us. You made it a point, March 7, to chase me down out of the town council meeting. We're okay with Balboni now. I'll leave that there. Let's see. Counselor Evans. Again, actually, I'll just reiterate, I'll just refer back to what Corinne said. You can't, on one hand, ask for volunteers and then summarily deny them. Counselor Paterna? If you'd like to start, if you'd like to, you know, have people, you know, reach out to, if you say it's the burden of those nominees to address the concerns, well, I think somebody else, I think Audrey Del Nicky already, you know, said that you've never actually approached her. But let's do this. Let's, let's have you address all the concerns that people have brought up about your service. Or about last year with the controversy with the painting on the sidewalk, or the disinformation that was spread regarding the housing moratorium. Again, you can't hold yourselves to a different standard. And lastly, based on trying to put together links, or put together different things regarding the FOIA requests and the prior speaker's comments, if in fact that a FOIA request does relate to activities surrounding the town manager, I'd like to call for an independent committee of the town council to take over as, or at least help, as Mark suggested. I think that would be prudent, and failure to do so would be dereliction of your duties.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak under item 15? Public input on any matter.
Hi. Stephanie Weintraub, 155 Skyline Drive. I just want to say that I'm not really buying the fact that I'm not qualified or fit to serve the community of South Windsor. Nobody has asked me why I wanted to serve, or nobody's asked me my, any experience that I have. For those of you that don't know about me personally, I just want to share with you the night, a reason why I became so emotional the night of December 2. At the time of the Safe Street meeting, I, for those of you that don't know, I'm a nurse, specifically a psych nurse, and at the time, I was working a job. I was, my job was to go out to people's homes in the north end of Hartford and administer their psychiatric medication. So it was a very emotional situation for me. So that's all I'm going to say on that matter. But I have noticed throughout my experience in politics that, I did notice that this is a trend happening in Democratic towns with, that have the majorities. It's happening in towns all across the state. It's happening in Madison. It's happening in Manchester. It's happening in Enfield. So, I mean, it seems to be trending in Democratic, Democratic majority towns. I think it's a dangerous path for South Windsor to go down, so I hope that you guys can come together, the Republicans and Democrats can come together for the greater good of South Windsor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to the council on any matters? Going once? Any other speakers on item 15, public input on any matters? Twice? Three times? Anyone else from the public like to speak? Not seeing any. Moving on to item 16, communications from council. Counselor Kaboski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to break my rules for a second time tonight and repeat what Counselor Evans talked about in regards to the candlelight vigil the other night for the Ukraine. I want to thank the Human Relations Committee for putting together a very nice evening. Thought everything was handled well. I didn't realize we had such a large Ukrainian contingent here in town. It was nice to see that, and it was just a nice evening all the way around.
I agree with you. Any other comments from communications from council? Not seeing any? Moving on, item 17, we've already done. Item 18, motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night, everyone. Stay well.